Called order the Board of County Commissioners. We're going to hold a special meeting and then a work session afterwards. Please join us in the pledge of allegiance and salute to the flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with everything and justice for all. I salute the flag of the state of New Mexico as the symbol of perfect friendship among the American cultures.
So we'll start with the special meeting agenda. Public hearing. There's a public hearing to solicit public input on the infrastructure capital improvement plan. Anthony, do you have anything to start off with?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman and Commissioner. The infrastructure capital improvement plan is now a requirement for any type of state and even in some instances federal funding if it's filtered through the state. To this point, it hasn't been mandatory for all types of funding, but it's my understanding that by next year, even the transportation, even the colonias, pretty much every type of funding that goes through the Department of Finance Administration will require to be on the infrastructure capital improvement plan. So we want to certainly get public input, number one, so that our CDBG projects, if we intend to apply next year, that they are on this plan.
So what number of projects or how far down do they go down on CDBG? Is that five, five or six?
It's not necessarily a requirement that it's in your top, that's in your top priority, but they do look at that and usually it's in the top five. Like I said, it's not, there's nothing in writing that says it's a requirement. The only requirements that I think that we have as far as the infrastructure capital improvement plan is when we go to for capital outlay monies, then it has to be in the top three.
So at this time, we'll call for public input on any infrastructure capital improvement plan. Go ahead, come on up, introduce yourself, please.
Good morning, Commissioners. My name is Bob Wilson. I'm a committee chair. All right. Is that working? All right. Good morning, Commissioners. My name is Bob Wilson. I'm a committee chair for the National Park Service Rivers Trails Conservation Assistance Grant that I believe, as you all know, led to Silver City and Grant County becoming designated gateway communities and county on the Continental Divide Trail. I'm not sure, I'm here today to learn and I'm not sure where trails fit in the infrastructure capital improvement plan, if anywhere, and so I'm here to ask you if trails, you know, fit in this plan and do you have any, any plans for trails?
Mr. Chairman, at this point, we don't really have a trails plan. Grant County doesn't. The town of Silver City does and we've certainly been working with the town of Silver City to expand that outside of the incorporated area. But if, if there is any chance that they're going to seek any type of funding for a trail within Grant County, I'm assuming that that project would have to be on, on the plan. I know previously that we had the trails plan on our ICIP. I think that we removed it after they did their last grant application, but we would certainly be willing to put it back on.
I would like to see that.
Want to add to that, I think that Baird and Santa Clara are working on a, some type of trail system between the two also that we would be in support of.
Us being the county and having the most real estate, as far as the trails are concerned, well, I think we ought to be involved.
Look, I think, Mr. Chairman and Commissioner, I think that there is significant plans of expanding trails all along the 180 corridor from Hurley all the way to the town of Silver City, all the way up to Pinos Altos and the surrounding areas. So I think that that's, I don't know how much of a priority it is on our ICIP, but we certainly can include it.
Okay, good. Thank you. Anything else, Mr. Wilson?
Yes, is there a document about those plans anywhere that, that a person could review?
Not to my knowledge, not to my knowledge. We're currently meeting on the Copper's Trails. Matter of fact, this afternoon, that's in between Santa Clara and Baird, which is kind of a start location because they have a lot of pedestrian traffic in there. I know that the town of Silver City courts has their trails group and, but I've never, I haven't really been involved in actually planning or, or grant writing. So while I know that there's some plans out there, I couldn't tell you exactly where to find them.
Very good. Thank you for your time and hopefully we can integrate these efforts between the town and the county. Thank you.
And I think that that probably an important thing. The ICIP also requires that you, that you have estimates and a, actually pretty intensive scope of work. They don't really accept vague ICIP plans. You have to have a good scope of work. You have to have estimates. You have to have an annual estimate of how much the project is going to cost. So while we used to put those plans on there and just kind of put a dollar amount out there, it's a little bit more comprehensive than that. Yes, they have to identify funding. It's, they're really asking for a lot of information.
Very good. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Wilson. Anybody else like to provide some public input today on the infrastructure capital improvement plan? Anthony, right, last year we approved one. Do you have the top five priorities that are last year's? Do you remember that?
The, this building, actually the sheriff's. I think that we also had the courthouse. We had Business Conference Center. Also, I think that, I guess I should have brought that with me.
Or Baird Water Resort.
I don't think, I think the reservoir was number five and.
Number five, was your building?
I think Badon, I think Badon Park was.
It was, and then he moved his up, we moved his up, remember?
We were six.
So we were six.
Okay. Well, we can get that later, but.
You know, and I'll, what we'll probably have to do is we've actually finished some of the projects. Some of the projects have already been funded. You're still required to keep them on your ICIP as long as they're in, oh, you know what it was? It was actually the fairgrounds. The fairgrounds was actually on number four priority last year because we used them for money.
Okay. Seeing no other public input, we're going to adjourn the special meeting for public input for the infrastructure capital improvement plan and call to order the Board of County Commissioners work session. Everybody had a chance to review the agenda? Have you seen any changes need to be made? Sir? Okay. Can I get a motion to approve?
Motion to accept agenda as written.
Second. All those favor, signify, say an aye.
Aye.
Okay. The purpose of a county work session is to inform the Grant County Board of Commissioners of the agenda items that will be addressed in the next regular meeting for the department heads and other elected officials to communicate with the commissioners in regard to matters of their respective departments. In accordance with Grant County Resolution 1401, we welcome the public to attend the county work session, but there will be no public input permitted during this meeting. So we'll start off with reviewing the regular meeting agenda. Abby, do you want to take that?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Let's see. Agenda item four, we're going to start off with a public hearing to discuss and potentially approve or disapprove a proclamation declaring extreme or severe drought conditions for the imposition of fireworks restrictions. And this is the same one that we've been putting on the agenda for the past few months. However, since I put it on the agenda, we have, seems like the monsoons might have started. And I think our fire management officer has comments, but first I was going to give you, I printed out just this morning, the U.S. drought monitor. And I have one for Rob, too. To see if anything had changed since I printed out the attachments to the proclamation. The one that's in your notebook, I put the same attachments that I usually do with the drought monitor, the monthly drought outlook, and then the national significant wildland fire potential outlook. I looked to see if there was an updated national significant wildland fire potential outlook and there hasn't been since I printed the one out that's in your notebooks, which was issued July 1st. And then there was a slight change in the U.S. drought monitor, the form that I just, or the document that I just gave you. And strangely, since the rain has started, it looks as if they've actually changed more of Grant County to extreme drought than was before if you compare it to the depiction in your notebook. However, I don't, I'm not sure if it's taken into account because it's still.
This is actually July 1st.
If you look right under it, it was released Thursday, July 3rd, but the monsoons really started maybe that evening and then the fourth on, so it still doesn't look like it's taking into account what's happening now.
Can we get another one of these for Thursday to see if there's been a change? Randy? I know Abby's not going to be here, but.
Oh, that's right.
Mr. Chairman, Commissioner, yeah, that'd be my help. So we'll have Gabe Holguin, Staff Aviation Officer here in public input and go over some of their restrictions as well and where they're at, what they see. Of course, that's north of us, getting a lot more rain, but I've been getting a lot of calls on fire restrictions and firework restrictions, so.
They lifted the restrictions.
Right. It was lifted at eight o'clock this morning, but I still wanted him to come on Thursday and go over how they came up with that and probably give the public a better idea of where we're at and along with yourselves as a commission to see where we're at and then go from there.
Okay, but we'll put, make sure we, I guess we'll just let him talk during this public hearing on, on Thursday. That'd be the time to do that, so.
Yeah, so that issue's still kind of up in the air. I'm not sure if I have a recommendation at this point and I don't know if Andy does.
What I've been told is we've gone from very high to high, so, I mean, it's still, we're still in drought conditions, but the current, you know, what we've seen so far, what we're supposed to see the rest of this week and in the next week and the rest of this month, you know, might, you know, with the monsoons coming, but we'll wait to hear from Gabe. I asked him to come and I also asked Fire Chief Tim Hydrick from Silver City also be here in case he had any words. So I think we all just want to be on the same page, Commissioner, so that we don't deceive the public.
Anything further? Okay. Move to public hearing number two. That'll be a discussion regarding adoption ordinance 1405 entitled in ordinance hearing to approve or disapprove an ordinance adopting the county hold harmless gross receipts tax.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Normally let you read that. I don't know why I did.
It helped me out. This is the ordinance that has been over in the clerk's office since, I believe, we passed a resolution of intent to publish three to four weeks ago. And this is the ordinance that goes along with that resolution. And as we previously discussed, it's an ordinance approving the adoption of a gross receipts tax of three eighths. And I don't know if the commissioners have questions about this. Mr. Saris here also. He's worked on this before he left and I've been working on it since he's left. I don't know if there are, you have questions about it?
I don't have any questions.
It's going to be the same as the current one eighth, only it's going to be three eighths now.
Okay.
Let's John just look at him. He's sitting on the edge of his chair.
He looks eager, very eager.
These chairs aren't as comfortable as those one were.
Don't tell me you want one of these out there?
Got out of rolling up.
So after, okay. It's like, public input, minutes, then financial reports. Lynda, could you go over those?
Sure.
It's like it's item D.
Okay, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. The expenditure report is for the period ending July 7th, 2014, and it begins with the AP check number 170754 and ends with check number 170943. And it includes the payroll checks for the pay periods, June 8, 2014 to June 21st, 2014, for a total of $861,220.44. And there's nothing unusual in these expenses.
Any questions, Commissioner?
No.
Me either, so go ahead and just move right into your cash flow.
The, this is the cash flow analysis for the month ending May 31st, 2014. And as of May 31st, we had received $7,890,547 in revenues and we had a total transfers out of $1,558,521. Operating expenditures to date were $2,896,990 and salaries and benefits to date were $5,482,107. We still have projected cash transfers of $385,222 into the general fund and transfers out of $389,000. The projected revenues through the end of June were $3,010,536 with projected operating expenditures of $419,635 and projected salaries and benefits of $501,270, leaving a total projection cash balance of $2,487,746 with a surplus of $382,404. For the road fund, revenues to date were $266,305. I'm sorry, that was the cash balance. Revenues to date were $946,33. Transfers to date, $502,715. Operating expenditures to date were $264,659 and salaries and benefits, $1,188,389 with an actual cash balance as of May 31st of $262,500. Projections of revenues through the end of June 30th were $68,034, projected operating expenditures of $89,351 and projected salaries and benefits through the end of June of $104,691, leaving a cash balance of $135,997 and a projected surplus of $5,062. In the correction fund, revenues through May 31st were $863,709. Transfers to date, $1,486,153. Operating expenditures of $654,298 and salaries and benefits of $1,831,056, leaving an actual cash balance of negative $103,736, but we still have a projected transfer in of $300,000, projected revenues of $160,575 and projected operating expenditures of $116,855 and projected salaries and benefits of $182,635, leaving a projected cash balance of $57,349. Thank you.
Any questions on the cash flow analysis?
I don't.
Okay. Go ahead, Debbie.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Under item D, we're going to receive an update from Lisa Jimenez from the nonprofit resource group and service of NCFC, which builds stronger nonprofit organizations in Grant County. She's just going to come and give an update. Under item E, WNM Communications is going to come and discuss an easement from the county. I think they're going to request an easement from us for a 15 by 15 electronic site at the Faywood Fire Station. They say that this site would provide broadband service to approximately 25 county residents. I'm not sure why they asked to be on the agenda. They could have just scheduled a meeting or something, but, so there, I think they want to give you a presentation on how it would work.
Do you know about this, Randy?
No.
I didn't.
Can you get in touch with the chief out there and make sure that, that he's good with it?
Yeah, I'm not sure, but I think they've been probably conversing with Bill Crossden, but I'll give him a call.
And that's fine. I just, not going to go against something they don't want.
I think we tried to do this before, maybe, I don't know where John went, but.
We did it at the Dunbar, uh, Fire Department.
Was it? And it benefits, I think, the whole area when they do something like this, but it is kind of a cumbersome process. Then under item F, Sissy's going to come and give a report on the fourth quarter of 2014 visitor center and tourism report. Under item G, we have approved, disapprove inventory deletion request for the clerk's office and I believe our clerk is requesting to dispose of old voting machines. I don't know if Rob has anything to add about that.
Chairman Commissioners, we have approximately 56 voting machines that we have to, they're no longer in use in the state of New Mexico. They've been decertified. They've been sitting back at a storage container at the road department for about 10 years now.
So you're telling me that Commissioner Ramos probably bought those?
Actually, we used them.
We used them. I don't think they. They deal kind with the little levers?
No.
No.
Little buttons, but they're pretty much obsolete in the state of New Mexico. They're obsolete in the entire state. I tried looking for other avenues, trying to sell them to other states. No one is using those, no value at all.
Are they steel?
No, they're plastic and some aluminum, but there isn't anything really salvageable or, or scrappable or us trying to sell them to anybody for that purpose. I think we'd lose more money trying to get the little bit of aluminum that there is on them off of them to sell. So we, we've been talking with the landfill. We're going to take them over there and they're going to, you know, if, if this is approved, they'll decide what they, what is best for those machines. They said they, you know, if it's plastic, they can be recycled. They'll go about it that way. Said worst case scenario, they'll just crush them because there really isn't a whole lot of anything on those machines that is salvageable or usable to anyone, really.
Maybe, maybe the covers.
Maybe.
You know, the box, very sturdy box. Okay. Thanks, Rob.
On your item H, approve, disapprove proclamation declaring September 24th through the 28th, 2014 as Grant County Fair Days. That's self-explanatory, I think. Item I, appoint Emily, I'm not sure if I can say that right. Gokovich? I, I've heard it, but I don't know if I've ever said it, to the food policy council. Under your tab I, you'll see the call for applications that they put out and then behind that, you'll see that Emily's filled out her application and her qualifications and interests are described throughout that application. Then under contracts, item J.
I don't have the J.
Oh, you know, that's because I'm going to remove it. I realized after I'd already put it on that it's only a contract for $500 a month, so it's not going to go over $600, or $6,000 a year. So I just went ahead and entered that agreement with Dr. Neely again because we needed to go ahead and get it in place because it was expiring.
It's the scratch J.
Yeah. And that is for the professional service agreement, emergency medical services. Then under item K, approve, disapprove amendment to food service contract with Summit. Summit is the vendor that provides our food at the jail and I think they also provide our commissary and they've sent this amendment to us and it's contemplated in the original agreement that they will increase their prices over time for the food. And I compared it to the original contract and I, it seems to be less than a three cent increase, so it's really.
Three cent or 3%?
Three cents. So it's a pretty low increase and that's the main change and then it also extends the term of the contract.
Mike, did you have anything to add to that?
The only thing is that Sandy Milo, who is the manager that comes down to the facility, she's been spread pretty thin because of the other facilities that they're opening up and we've had some bumps in the road, but she's always responded very quickly, so we're pretty satisfied with the service they've been giving the facility.
And the food's been pretty good, hasn't it?
Yes.
The food, because our staff eats it, right?
Yes.
Joseph told me it was pretty good.
Joseph looks healthy. He looks healthy.
Maybe he's too good. Then under resolutions, item 11, approve, disapprove a resolution 1433 declaring July 14th through the 18th, 2014 as New Mexico Hunger Week. And Priscilla let me know that she wasn't able to be here today to talk with you all about this, but she'll be here on Thursday if you have more questions. But what's coming up is that there's going to be a summit in July for people or for groups to come together and discuss the issue of hunger in New Mexico. Apparently it's a pretty big issue still, so they get together and talk about solutions and potential funding. She says her goal is to have every local government in the state approve a resolution as well as many nonprofits to bring awareness to the issue. And then under item M, approve, disapprove, resolution 1434 approving publication of notice of intent to adopt gross receipts tax bond ordinance. This is something that would follow the gross receipts tax ordinance that you're going to, or that you're going to address on Thursday. And the idea with the bond ordinance is that we would encumber some of the gross receipts taxes, go out for bonds, and I believe you all are aware of projects that we're very interested in, that we would be issuing bonds for capital projects.
As part of that process.
Yeah.
Part of the ICIP.
Right. And of course, you're all aware of the potential of losing state appropriations and probably the biggest one is Pilt, so we're trying, as you know.
Make us for that loss.
Just letting the public know that that's, that's what we're preparing for.
In the lack of capital outlay money for the last.
Right. And we have numerous projects that we've been unable to fund. Then under item N, approve, disapprove, resolution 1435 approving reassignment of members to the area transportation authority board and Grant County Water Commission. And this is what.
Get that out, no, no, resolute.
Sure, it's even a short one. I've prepared resignation letters for both of you and I left them in your offices and then on that.
So did I.
On that same day, we'll pass this resolution and we'll basically switch you two on those boards. And then I put, initially, we didn't have an alternate for the authority board, which also, I also put in that you would be on the authority board and the Southwest Regional Dispatch Board depending on if it was necessary for the Southwest RTD to meet, but that group really doesn't meet anymore. But I also put an alternate, Randy Villa, because he does oversee that department.
And he goes to all the meetings anyway?
Yeah, he does.
Perfect. Okay, now on to the Water Commission. Is there an alternate there?
There, there wasn't originally.
It's the, the manager. It's always been the manager. So should we?
I can add the manager.
Yeah.
And I'm going to check with Anthony before I. And I'm going to check with Anthony before I potentially add something. Anthony?
Yeah, Mr. Chairman, I apologize for not reviewing the agenda, but I'm blown there. The subdivision is not on, we do have all the signatures for the dedication rate, so if the commission still chooses, we can put a resolution adopting that as a public road. It doesn't bind us in any way to do any of the improvements. They will have to petition also, secondly, for the assessment district.
Just like, it's going to be the center reader.
That's correct. It's just the beginning of the process, and they'll allow them to actually petition for the maintenance.
Dory knows how to do it now, so it'll take half as much time. Is that all right?
I hope so.
She's in the...
I think it's, I don't think it's really, the fact that she didn't know how to do it, I think it just takes time.
She said in the back room, she says, "I'm giving her a hard time."
But I think that we'll put together a resolution if you want to add it to the agenda.
Absolutely, please do.
And this was the one that we've agreed, we had a difficult time getting all the signatures on the dedication, so it's a pretty big deal that we finally got them, and Dory just stayed on it and got that last signature.
We located the Gavin California, and he's still available. Wasn't it California?
We found him, and then there was, the very last one was just over in Las Cruces, but we just had a real hard time getting hold of him. But she got them all.
All right.
So we're off.
And at that time, we will adjourn and start doing county manager interviews in closed session, right?
I did have a little bit to add.
Oh, okay.
For that, we have the limited personnel matter for the managers' interviews, and I was going to add an issue of, or an item of pending litigation.
Okay.
And I'll get that on there before Thursday.
Okay. I have a question on that now.
I'm not going to be here.
I know.
So I'm not going to add those.
You're not going to add that. Okay. Are we going to go into executive session, let's say we can't get all the interviews done on Thursday, are we going to come back out and recess and reopen the meeting Friday, if we have me? Are we going to open a new meeting on Friday?
We've already advertised for a special meeting on Friday, so we will adjourn on Thursday, and then we'll come and meet again on Friday. You'll call another meeting, and then we'll go into executive session again.
Okay.
And that's just how I planned it.
That's fine. Just so the public knows what we're doing.
And hopefully, we're going to get them all done in two days.
And we do have an executive session today in which we should, should come out with some type of agreement on the interview agenda, so. All right, so we'll stand for county, huh? County reports.
County reports, yeah.
Yeah, let's start with the hospital. I see Brian here.
Good morning, Mr. Chair, Commissioners, everyone. Just a few updates that I'd like to talk to you about from our, the hospital's activities from the month of May, and then I'd like to spend the balance of my time talking about the home health hospice situation.
Absolutely.
So first thing, I'd like to just thank our community for their participation in the Gila Golf Classic, helped our foundation raise almost $20,000. That money, much-needed money, will go back into our organization for equipment, so that Gila Regional can stay kind of on that leading edge with equipment, so we really appreciate that, and it was a fun day. Appreciate all the volunteers and all the support to put that thing together, so thank you for that. Quick update on our linear accelerator project, that's our radiation treatment big machine that our legislators, Representative Martinez, carried a bill to obtain funding for that, supported by Senator Morales and many others, to help obtain the funding. That was, you know, two sessions ago, two legislative sessions. Just want to let everybody know, we've been talking about that project. It was a really complex project, and we had a great team working on it, and that came off, and we met all of our deadlines for that, and we reopened our radiation treatment services on June 11 with an open house that was attended by approximately 75 people in our community, and we are back up and running with a technology that's not available, I believe, anywhere else in New Mexico with our radiation treatment. So just thank everybody who is involved in that. We want to also welcome our new board members. Thank you. Mr. Joe Ramirez from the Mining District will be joining us, and Dr. Stanley will be joining us, and they replace some highly valued board members in Dr. Nelson and Robert Morales Senior, who've served us very well over the last few years. We can't thank them enough for the incredible amount of time they donated to Gila Regional to help us through a really challenging transition. So thanks to our outgoing board members, and a big welcome to our incoming board members, and thank you for your help and support in both of those scenarios. Want to let you know, our emergency room medical provider process, we're replacing our current group, which is managed by a company called MCare. I've been reporting on that. We are about a little more than halfway through that process. This week, we'll be selecting our new group. We've had a panel that consisted of physicians and people on Gila Regional's side reviewing multiple responses to an RFP. We're finishing the onsite interviews this week, and we'll be making a decision, and we will be transitioning to a new emergency department medical provider group by the end of this calendar year, hopefully even sooner than that, that project's going well. We expect that we're going to serve our community better on the medical side, and also on some of the billing issues that have come up with our present group. So that project's moving along. Next is just a quick update on the finances as of the end of May. So we're still delayed a month, but as of the end of May, we actually had a positive bottom line of $5,000, which, you know, doesn't sound like a lot, but since sole community provider monies completely went away at the end of December, obviously, that added additional challenge, and we've been losing money on the revenue expense side of the accounting equation, but it's been getting less and less each month. I believe in January, it was approximately $800,000. February, $600,000 loss, and we've chipped away at that, and now we're in the month of May, and it's a positive bottom line of $5,000. So that continues to go in the right direction. On the other side of the accounting equation, on the cash side, we started the fiscal year last June at 109 days of cash. At the end of May, we were at 127 days in cash. So cash is doing well, and as I said earlier, we'll be closing out the books for the month of June, and at my next report, you'll get the fiscal year close on that. The other thing, two other things on the finance side I wanted to point out, and these are, this is really the big one, and we've talked a little bit about this, there's another financial metric called our daily spend. That's how we calculate our days in cash. How much does it cost us to run our business every day? And back in, at the end of June last year, it cost Gila Regional $191,000 a day to run that business. And if you would have seen the graph of the increase in our daily spend, this is in hospitals all across the country, you know, it's a straight line on a 45-degree angle. Every year, every month, that cost goes up. And in healthcare, with the healthcare crisis we're in, you see it, you read it, people talk about it all the time. One of the key things that we need to address in healthcare is to bend that cost curve, meaning this increase in cost to do business needs to, that angle needs to start to bend a little bit, slow down the increase in cost. That's what people will talk about. Our approach, though, and our philosophy is, we really didn't just need to bend it, we needed to break the curve. We needed to drive that cost down, and that's what hospitals really need to do across the country. So although it sounds good, we need to bend it a little bit, what we really need to do to impact change across the country is to break that curve. And so as of the end of June last year, it was costing us $191,000 a day to run the business. As of the end of May, our cost per day is $175,000 per day. So, you know, approximately $21,000 a day decrease that we save per day, so, you know, do the math on that one, times 365 days. That's a really clear indicator of the work that's being done there around efficiencies. We have literally 100 projects going on at any given time around efficiency, but the metric, the bottom-line metric that you want to look at is your daily spend. And so we want to report that out, that that's the result of a tremendous amount of effort by all of our caregivers, and our board, and the support of our community members. These are real numbers, and again, we'll get the final at the end of June. The last one is, at this point, you know, we finished last fiscal year just about $9 million in the red in the hole, and at this point, on the revenue expense side, we're about $2.1 million in the red in the hole, with one more month to go. And we were predicting we would be about $2 to $2.5 million in the red. So that clearly represents a $6.5 to $7 million turnaround, really in about 10 or 11 months. Once again, a tremendous amount of effort and support by our commissioners, our board, tremendous amount of effort by our caregivers. And our goal in this year, in this coming fiscal year, 2015, is to turn that around into a positive bottom line, and our indicators appear like that's going to happen. That's what our focus is. So that's kind of just a snapshot of the finances. Again, that's the end of May of this year, one more month to report. The next thing that I wanted to talk about, I think I want to move then into, for the balance of the report, into the home health hospice situation. Everybody knows by now that we will be discontinuing those two service lines. I want to context that decision back to the challenges that we face in healthcare. Everybody knows it, we've all read the articles for the last four or five years. It's probably one of the top dialogues in the country. Healthcare is in trouble across the country. You know, we're, in a sense, bankrupting the country, you know? The costs are unsustainable. Things need to change. Everybody knows this, we've all read the articles. You read about hospitals across the country closing down, being bought out, massive layoffs, across-the-board kinds of layoffs, and Gila Regional is not immune to this situation. Yet, when it hits us, when we have to start making, you know, difficult, responsible decisions, we understand it still hurts, it's still upsetting, it's still confusing, so I wanted to talk about it. But I wanted to context it in the healthcare environment that we are in. Gila Regional and no other hospital in the country can continue to operate like they have the last 10 or 15 years. We need to change our approach, we need to focus on the efficiencies that we've been working on, we need to change what we look like, we need to make the difficult decisions around what we can offer to the community and what we cannot. And in the areas we cannot, how do we then partner with our community to fill in services? Gila Regional can't control or be a part of, or control the whole continuum of care. Things like home health and hospice, these are services that are typically, and it's true in our community, replicated in the community in some way. We have, you know, private businesses, home health and hospice. So they're the kind of decisions we need to look at. We know we need to change, we know we need to consolidate and focus on the core of our services. What business should the hospital be in? So they're the difficult decisions we're involved in. We started day one, 11 months ago, with a complete assessment of every single department in our organization. It's never been accomplished before, you know, in our recent history. It took us quite a few months to assess, do a deep analysis of every single department, so that now we can study and have really strategic, thoughtful dialogue about every single department in our organization. It's from that work and from our discussions with the board over this past year that we came to the decision to discontinue our home health and hospice services. It's a challenging environment for a hospital to be in, it's a part of the continuum that can be replicated in the community, so we've had to make that decision, that that's a business that we really can't be in going forward. Our focus now with home health and hospice is the transition. What we're focusing on is really kind of two large areas. Number one is our patients. How do we transition our patients appropriately? So our transition process is going to take 60 days, 90 days, 120 days, however long it takes for us to make sure that each patient is transitioned appropriately, that their course of treatment is either completed, or they are transitioned to another agency. Right now, there's one other agency in town, Horizon Home Health, and a separate organization, Horizon Hospice Care. There's another organization that has, we've been in contact with, they've contacted us, they're interested in moving into the community, so we're talking to them also about how we can support them in this transition. So our hope is that we will have, well, we know we have one agency, possibly another, that patients will have a choice as to which organization they choose to be treated by, and that between these organizations, they fill that gap in care that Gila Regional delivered as much as possible, as much as possible. So there's the patient side, and then there's the caregiver side. We have approximately 45 caregivers in home health and hospice. So our goal, somebody asked me the other day, you know, how many caregivers are you cutting? And this isn't really a play in words, but we're not cutting anybody. We're discontinuing a service, and our focus will be to absorb as many of those caregivers back into the, you know, our organization. We have quite a few open positions, nursing being one of them, and then to help the rest of the caregivers transition over to another agency, because the patient demand will still be there. So there's going to be additional jobs in these other home health hospice organizations, has to be. They won't be able to meet that same demand. So over the next 60, 90, 120 days, I'll be reporting to you and the community about what that looks like. We'll be able to report all patients, or this many patients were transitioned, and at this point, this is the data on our caregivers, that however many got absorbed into the organization, this many joined other organizations, and then we'll know the total, was there any net loss of positions for our community? And our hope, of course, is that there is a zero net loss in jobs to the community. We'll be able to report, though, 30, 60, 90 days, and we'll see what that looks like. Once again, hopefully, every single patient transfers appropriately, every single caregiver that chooses to or wants to work still within the Gila Regional or the community also has a job there, and we'll be able to report it. But just need to let you know, this is the most challenging healthcare environment in modern history. It would be irresponsible to not make changes. The fact that we were able to move from $9 million deficit to $2 million deficit with really very minimal loss in positions, I think, was a very well-thought-out and plan by Gila Regional and our board, but we still have about another $6 million to go. We're $2 million in the red. We need to get on the other side of that equation. We need to, in this next year or two, get back to a bottom line of about $4 to $5 million. So we have another $6 million to go, you know? So our footprint needs to change. It's happening across the country, every hospital's dealing with this, every community is dealing with that. This decision was made in an attempt to have the least impact on our community. The services will still continue in some way. Caregivers will still have jobs in some way, most. So that's the type of analysis and thoughtful discussions we've been having with our board, and ultimately, the responsible decision that needed to be made, but we completely understand any feelings of upset by our, of course, our caregivers, our patients, our community. We've been answering those questions, talking to everybody, and now I'll stand for questions for...
Mr. Chair?
Mr. Chairman?
One of the questions I had, and it's been asked of me by one patient, was that they seemed to think that they were blindsided by this. They had no notice, no information coming from you folks that this was going to happen so they can make other plans such as moving to maybe a child's hometown or their town or whatever they had to do. Was there any kind of notice given to the public?
You know, it's an interesting question. Before you make a decision, it's many times not appropriate to talk about the strategic decisions you're thinking about. The final decision was not made till our Friday board meeting, you know, a week, over a week ago. That was when the decision was finalized. I'm not, I don't believe that it would be appropriate to tell, you know, to talk to the community, hey, we're thinking about this, and maybe this, and maybe this. What that does is cause unnecessary fear and panic. So, once the decision was finalized, what we did first is, we talked to our caregivers. We thought they deserve to know first. So, we talked to our caregivers. And I think what they can consider is their notice, did they get notice? This is the notice. I mean, if we would have said, you know what, we're closing home health and hospice in two weeks, that'd be one thing. But what we've said is, we are going to discontinue the services. This is the notice. And we're going to transition this over 60, 90, 120 days or longer, whatever it takes till that last patient is appropriately transitioned or placed. So, that is essentially the notice. It's a question that comes up all the time, you know, why didn't you tell us sooner? Well, we told people when the decision was final, and it would be, I believe, inappropriate to say something sooner if it wasn't for sure.
The answer to this is you have a transition period, and so, that is the notice.
That is correct.
Correct. The other thing I would ask is that, is there adequate, private caregivers to take care of these folks within our community, or have you looked into that?
At this point, the answer would be, with our existing company, you're talking about Horizon Home Health and Horizon Hospice.
Yeah, outside of the hospital.
Yeah, the answer to that would be no, because Heal Regional had 60 or 70 patients on their side, and there's nobody that can absorb that. This is where those organizations will make a decision. Horizon Home Health and Hospice, and we're already in dialogue. We started dialogue with them on day one. As soon as we were done talking to our caregivers and making calls to our commissioners and others, we met with Horizon Home Health and Hospice on the same day to start that transition plan so that they can start to understand how they will have to increase their employment models to deal with this demand.
Because they're part of the formula of transition.
Yes. So, the patients are still going to be here, and the caregivers are still here. Our nurses, our therapists are still here. Where they work at the end of this equation will be, you know, we'll see how things get covered. So, they're here, they're here, but they have, our employees have not transferred yet to where they need to be. So, there'll be a couple bumps in this transition, I guarantee it, but it'll settle out, we believe, in a short period of time. And it's, of course, a major focus of ours every step of this transition.
So, this transition period is very, very important to us in trying to take care of the patients and locate caregivers and try to make it as easy as possible. It's not going to be easy, that's a bad word. Try to do it with some kind of passion, compassion.
Correct.
Anything else?
No.
Mr. Chairman?
Well, I'd just like to say thanks for, you know, considering the transition, and we know it might be even longer what you're thinking, of course, correct? By dissolving these two areas, what do you think that's going to do to our $2.1 million deficit in the next year?
The, so, there's a couple ways to look at this, but the pure bottom-line financial loss in those two areas, and it primarily sits in the home health area. Hospice is a close-to-a-break-even service line, sometimes a positive. But the loss in home health is moving in the direction of $1 million a year. A couple of years ago, it was $600,000 loss. Last year, $800,000. We've put effort into seeing if we could turn that around, and this year, by the end of the year, it was still approaching $1 million. That's just the financial issue. There's, as an organization, we have to spread our resources across the entire organization. So, there's a lot of support services that go across the board. So, there's just the pure financial reallocation that will go back into the organization. And then, there's all the resources that support home health and hospice that then we can then focus on the core of what we need to be doing. I also want to point out, though, these losses, this approaching $1 million, is of no fault of the caregivers that work there. It's the reimbursement environment. These caregivers, nurses, techs, PTs, OTs, have done incredible work, incredible service for our community for many years, and they are to be commended and applauded. As the healthcare environment shifts around, it doesn't discriminate as far as who is impacted. So, these caregivers have done an incredible job. It's a function of the healthcare environment. I appreciate that question.
Out of your forecasting also, what percentage of the employees do you think you'll be able to absorb at the hospital itself?
Our hope, out of those 40 caregivers, my personal hope is at least half of them. We have potential positions for around 25, I believe, and some further creations, but we'll be looking at that. We'll be reporting over time. You'll get those final numbers. I'm hoping at least half, more than half. We have, right now, 15 nursing positions open approximately, and I think there's five, six, eight kind of nurses over there. We're hoping to absorb them all, anybody who wants to join us. But we'll be reporting that every month where we stand with that.
That's all I've got.
One of the questions that I got asked in town was, and you made a great case on home health and hospice. One of the, the other departments that I've been asked about is ambulance, because people have a perception that inside the city limits, and I'm kind of sorry that Councilman Dr. Bedesen left, because she could be a person that might give us perspective from the town side, but there's a perception that Silver City and Heal Regional are duplicating services within the city limits, that every time you see an ambulance inside the city limits, you see a city and a hospital ambulance. And I understand that the city doesn't transport, but they have the capability to if they had to. And I'm wondering why we're using those monies. Yeah.
Good question. Yeah, that's a great question. I wish Cynthia was here also and also James Marshall to speak to those issues. It's a discussion that has been had, that we're going to need to continue with. You bring up the point, there's other departments that are being talked about. They're the same departments we've talked about for years, so it's not a secret. We talked about it yesterday, again, in our town hall where we were having these discussions. Departments that can be replicated in the community, they're the ones that we've known for years that we need to really look at. Ambulance is one. James is the director of that department. They've made a lot of improvement in their cost situation, their revenue situation, but there are further dialogues related to efficiency that need to be had. Our outpatient rehab is another department that is also, it's different from home health. It's much smaller, but similar challenges, and they've made some continued steps to decrease their footprint, to get as close to profitability as possible. So, yeah, home health and hospice is not the only ones, and we're not being shy about which are those other departments. We all know, we're not going to pretend. So, we're having dialogues around those departments, with those departments. And the rest of the departments know, I mean, you know, let's take our ER, for example. Our ER loses money. Obviously, we would never even think of, consider talking about discontinuing our ER. I mean, you can't even have that discussion. You couldn't. It's part of our licensing. So, the ER people know that their department can't and won't go away, but they know that they need to continue to work on processes to improve quality and increase efficiencies. So, everybody in healthcare, everybody in Heal Regional has a level of urgency around what we need to do to continue to survive and thrive in this environment. And then, there are a few departments even, have even more urgency. And that's, it's just the truth, and we're not hiding from that truth.
Just one other thing. You know, you bring up a great point, Cunningham, is on ER admissions and are using it. It's probably the most expensive entry point that we have as far as a hospital. Is that not correct? Are we working on some kind of education with the public? Because, you know, we have these other organizations within our community where they have these late-night operations, medical, and that they can visit and get the same care. And have we worked on some kind of education to the public to try to redirect part of that population to those areas?
Yes, and we have to do a lot more there. You bring up a huge point. And moving forward, many insurances are moving away from reimbursement for inappropriate ER visits if they're not meeting certain criteria. So, we're going to have to work even more with the other agencies in town that do urgent care. And we're also looking at developing sub-processes in the ER so that if you walk in and urgent care is closed, that there is a sub-unit, our own urgent care, so to speak, area that we can funnel people through so that they are appropriately treated at that lower-cost environment. But it's a huge issue for ERs across the country, and yes, that's part of our discussions.
I just appreciate the work that you and your staff and your caregivers are giving to the community. And you're addressing some difficult times, some difficult issues. And I just hope that the public understands that these are difficult decisions. If we could, we'd give them any and everything we could, but got to keep those doors open. So, we've got to make some difficult and hard decisions, and I appreciate you, you know, addressing those. Thank you.
Thank you. Our goal is to make sure that we're doing the right things and putting as many resources as possible so that those services are the highest quality they can be for our community. We can't be all things to all people anymore.
Keeping the doors open.
No.
We've got to do that.
Times have changed. We gave $18 million to a social provider money. We could do all that. Now, we have to be all we can be with what we have.
Very much appreciate your support and understanding.
And I do appreciate you guys making the very hard decisions that you've had to make. I'm glad I'm not having to make those every day, to tell you the truth. So, thank you very much, Brian.
Thank you. Appreciate it.
Okay. Mike?
Mr. Chairman, Commissioners, respectfully submit my report for July, June 25th through July 8th. Item number one, policies and procedures are currently being reviewed. Item number two, our detention facility update. We currently have two vacancies. Applicants are being reviewed this week, and background investigations will commence as soon as we select the applicant for employment. Item number three, our assessment, the status remains the same. Item number four, and a training update. Newly hired officers completed their defensive tactics training on June 30th and July 1st. The training was conducted by Lieutenant Bronnagiri and Sergeant Josh Calindo, who's our training officer. The CERT team also conducted their training, and they received their control force training, which is mandatory training, on Sunday, July 6th. And the training was also conducted by Lieutenant Agiri and Sergeant Calindo. On the intervention, we met with inmate support program. We met on July 2nd. We were discussing some future funding opportunities for the inmate support bill, so we're still working with that, trying to find some funding so we can continue on with that. Our recognition program that has remained the same. On our statistics, the Grant County Detention Facility, the average daily population for the month of June 25th through July 8th, the population was at 87. That was 14 more than last month. The high population males was 68, which was 10 more than last month, and high population females was 19, which is 4 more than last month. For the month of June 25th through July 8th, they were 87 inmates, which was 14 more than last month incarcerated in the facility. And this shows an increase in activity from last month. Our monthly agency totaled arrests for the entire month of June, this is for the entire month. It's not just from the dates of June 25th through July 8th. This will be for the entire month of June. For the New Mexico State Police, Silver City Police Department is 125, New Mexico State Police is 23, Grant County Sheriff's Department is 29, Santa Clara was nine, Baird was nine, Hurley PD was seven, adult probation parole was two, and New Mexico Gaming District, one. Our detention facility conducted 12 district court transports. Division one magistrate court, we had 13. Division two, we had five. Silver City Municipal Court was six, Santa Clara had zero, Baird Municipal Court had one, Hurley Municipal Court was zero, and we had zero medical transports as compared to zero the last month. Total number of transports for the month of June was 37 as compared to 54 of last month. On our jail utilization and occupancy, the offense levels for the month of June, we had seven felonies, 25 misdemeanors and other violations, and these are failure to appear in warrants for 46, which totaled 78 offenses. Total hours in custody was 2,722 hours. Average length of stay is 8.24 days, and the sentencing report shows that this is an increase from last month. That's my report.
Any questions for Mike?
I haven't. Thank you, Mike.
Thank you, Mike. Earl?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman and Commissioners. Pretty much business as usual. We did get started on that Santa Rita subdivision yesterday. I think them guys had a heck of a party last night. They were talking this morning when I was out there. So, they're pretty happy. On there, we've got miners legend. It'll be done today, and then we'll start on that needing done, probably start on it by this afternoon. We'll have a cap on there where they can get in and out of there and be able to drive faster than five miles an hour on there. I'm waiting on a PO so I can get the culverts ordered, but we'll be out there a couple weeks, and we'll get them fixed up. That's all I've got. I did have a question for Rob, a storage container. What are you going to do with that when you get those loading machines out of there?
I have to get.
Okay.
But if, we could probably talk about something if you need it for some.
That's all I've got.
Okay. Thanks, Earl.
Anthony?
Mr. Chairman, Commissioners, I, all I've been doing the past two weeks is reading. We have a lot of reports that came in the past couple of weeks. Of course, we talked about the last week, the chairman brought up that we have documents from the Clean Water Act from the Mexican Environment Department. I think that, from what I've been reading and seeing, I think that those reports are directly related in some ways to the lack of water because of water so shallow, because we have burn scars. The water quality, of course, has decreased in our area. So, I think that those are directly related to those type of things. I don't know, I'm going to continue and see if I can put together some comments on that along with the, and second, of course, the U.S. Waters Draft Report. I haven't completed it yet, but I will have some comments, and I'll send those to the Commissioners on both, both of those, I guess they're not projects, but both of those potential mandates from our, from the Environment Department. I've also, they came out with a Heal groundwater modeling report for the AWSA projects, the repairing health vegetation report for the AWSA projects. The Bureau of Reclamation came out with their draft report on the projects. All of those documents are anywhere between 150 and 300 pages long. So, I'm trying to get a handle on each one of those reports so that I can, I think it's, I read a article yesterday about what's happened in California. They're actually to the point where they're actually having water auctions. They are actually selling water to the highest bidder. So, I think that it's imperative for us to protect our natural resources because if the drought continues, we could potentially be in that same situation. Also, another report that came in, the draft EIS for the experimental population revision for the Mexican wolf, there is a comment period in August. There'll be two public meetings held, one August 11th in Pintop, Arizona, and the second in TRC on August 13th. Trying to, trying to educate myself on all of these things. Like I said, that's all I've been doing, is sitting in my office and reading. It's not really the most exciting thing to read, and so, but hopefully, I can, I can get a handle on all these reports and report to the Commission and see if we can't at least comment on what the consensus is. That's, oh, I would like to report, Dory brought me a report. Viva Santa Rita, that subdivision over there. We originally had an assessment district of $46,700. Almost $16,000 has been paid, so... Almost sixteen thousand dollars has been paid, so the New Mexico Finance Authority loan will, has been reduced already by sixteen thousand dollars almost. So, I think that's a good thing. Also, I got a report from Kevin this morning, chugging right along on the fire station. Randy might want to report on that. But also, the fairgrounds up there, they got the plumbing stubbed in and ready to go, but we're still waiting on, it's my understanding, they're still waiting on permits for this foundation, so. But that's all I got, Mr. Chairman.
Okay. Any questions for Anthony?
No.
Thank you. All right. Thanks. Randy?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman and members of the board. Just going to basically talk about some fire issues. We did have a fire on Separ Road, which was July 3rd, about three hundred and eighty-two acres out in the middle of pretty much nowhere. We were able to protect a couple of old ranch homes. The individuals, the property owner, had just purchased the property and closed on it that morning. So, he was a little concerned about some of the old structures that were out there that he was going to try to refurbish. So, we were able to jump on that as quickly as possible, protect those, and so we had no structures burned at all. But I did want to thank the Forest Service. They sent in a couple of smokejumpers in there to help us out. Whiskey Creek, Fort Baird, obviously Tyrone's District, I want to thank them for really getting on that right away, and it was a lightning cause, so we were able to take care of that. Fourth of July weekend, I want to thank the Sheriff's Office. We had a lot of calls assisting them a little bit with people, complaints about people lighting fireworks that were restricted. Obviously, we can't cite them, but we were able to, you know, get out there and hopefully give them the information that they needed to stop that. So, I did want to thank the Sheriff's Department for that. Again, I'll have Gabe, we'll get him from the Forest Service here on Thursday, talk about the lift, the fire restrictions that they went into, they lifted those this morning at 0800. I am talking with our fire chiefs, the Rural Fire Chief Association, looking at their districts. Also, I'm driving around the county a little bit as best I could just to look at the conditions. We're still in drought conditions. Again, we went from very high to high, so it still means we're going to get a lot of lightning strikes. Hopefully, we'll get a lot of rain with those, put those out. So, I will be making a decision here pretty soon, depending on the rest of this week, how we get through. Also, talking with the fire chief of Silver City. They're talking about lifting their restrictions here within the city limits. So, we all, just like I said earlier, we all want to be on the same page so that we just don't confuse the public of what restrictions are and what restrictions aren't. Public Works, still working at the airport. I'm going to help out there today. We had the FAA come in and do inspection. We did have a few, a couple of issues out there, but nothing that can't be fixed. Basically, it's all with, you know, financing. What needs to be done, again, I want to invite the Commission to the luncheon sponsored by WH Pacific, which is July 15th, next Tuesday, from 12 to 1:00. It's a pre-planning meeting, talking about the airport, where we go, what are our concerns out there, working along with, the Forest Service will be there. So, I invite you all to be there at that luncheon. With the rains, Public Works is, you know, monitoring, making sure we don't have leaks on our buildings, so we've got guys running around doing that. We, you look on the side view, we've put the handicap lift in. That didn't take very long. Robbie Molina and Victor Placensio did that for us yesterday. I think that's about it. Unless you have any questions, that's all I have. Again, basically, I'm working on just the fire restriction because I am getting a lot of calls from people, but I'd like the public to understand that it might be raining at your house a lot, but, you know, it might not be raining five miles away from you at all. So, I think in the cliff area, it's still a little dry, but we just want to be sure that we are all on the same page with all agencies. So, unless you have any questions, that's all I have. That's it.
Questions?
No.
Off the hook. Linda, you have anything to add?
Just, Mr. Chairman and members of the board, I'd just like to add that we're working on our year-end process right now with AP, payroll, and the Treasurer's Office, and we're also, I'm also working on our final budget so we can have something ready for the next Commission meeting.
Have the auditors been in yet?
We got a phone call from Ryan. He's planning on coming in next week just to start checking on our AP checks, and that'll be the first step toward it. Okay?
Thanks, Linda.
Thank you.
Okay. Let's go to the Sheriff.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, Commissioners. It was a fairly busy weekend for us, very eventful for the holiday weekend. Like Randy said earlier, we had a lot of calls for fireworks. I don't have an exact number of calls that we dealt with, but in the stat report, it was busy, and not just fireworks, we were fairly busy. Other than that, you know, I have one opening that we're currently trying to fill, but we'll hopefully have it filled within the next couple of weeks. Other than that, it's been business as usual, and I'll stand for any questions. Do you have any?
Questions for Sheriff?
No.
Was there any one particular part of the county that had fireworks?
All of Grant County. There was everywhere.
I didn't hear any at my house.
I did at mine.
So, Eric, who you got today?
I have no report today.
No report? Okay. Thank you. Rob?
Thank you, Chairman and Commissioners. The reason for our inventory deletion request is for the fact that this, earlier this year, the Secretary of State asked and received over six million dollars from the legislature. And with that six million dollars, she's gone ahead and purchased brand-new voting machines for the entire state. Some of the states, some of the counties around the state, the big five as we call them, did use those machines at this past election, the one in June. We haven't decided in our office in which direction we're going to go, whether to use the M-100s in November or to use the brand-new ones that we are going to be receiving sometime in August. That's the reason that we're trying to clear out that box a little bit, just in case we have to store some machines. The plan is, from what I understand, the Secretary of State will deliver those machines in at a later date, come and pick up the machines that are currently in use. Those will be decertified through the state, and we'll be back on that new machine. So, that's the reason for that inventory deletion request. And like I say, our office, we're in discussion right now. We don't know what direction we want to go, to use those M-100s for the last time or to go ahead and use the new machines. You know, we're going to probably talk with some of our poll workers, engage what their feelings are, you know, to see if they want to take on the task. The new machines seem a little more complicated, but I believe there shouldn't be any issue for any of our poll workers to use. We'll be taking the trip in August to get trained on those new machines, and then they'll provide further training in September for the rest of our staff and our election techs.
Now that you have voting centers, Rob, how many machines do you need?
They're going to send us fifteen, which I think is a little bit low because we have thirteen convenience centers, or we have thirteen polling locations, I should say, and...
So, that's your allocation out of the six...
So, that's my allocation out of the six million.
So, if we need more, it's up to us?
I believe so. I think that's the direction, and I think we may have to go in that direction because two spare machines, you know, we're cutting it close to say somebody, you know, say the machines go down in Mule Creek or Hatchita, we're going to have to drive one way out there.
And you can't mix and match machines, huh?
No.
They're going to be the same?
They're going to be the same. So, we either have to use the M-100s for this election or the new ones.
How many M-100s do you have?
We have thirty-six of those. So, we're good with those, and that's a good number to have. But then again, we received those when we were using the thirty-one precincts in Grant County at that time before we went to...
And are these new machines ballot-based often?
Yes, paper ballots. They're just tabulators that read.
My question.
So, and that's the direction that the legislator wanted, legislature wanted to go many years ago, is to go away from any kind of electronic machines, and we're all paper ballot throughout the state, and it looks like it's going to continue like that for some time.
Okay. So, is there any sunset on this, on these monies? If we don't take the machines in a certain time, do we not get them, or...
They are giving us those machines.
We get those machines?
We get those machines, yes. So, this will be the last election if we choose to not, to use the M-100s, the current ones that we're on, this will be the last election they'll be used for.
So, you'll have to use them?
So, we'll have to use the other ones, because they will decertify these machines after this election.
So, how many machines do you perceive needing?
I'm looking at hopefully getting at least five spare machines. And I'll, I'll speak with the Secretary of State's office to see exactly where we're at. I think sometimes they, they give us low numbers based on the monies that are available to them, but I think if we, you know, have a good enough reason to ask for more, that they're more than willing to give us those extra machines. You know, I think some of these, you know, our county isn't very big, but we're one of those counties that is far-stretched, and we have a lot of polling locations that are hours away from us.
So, if you have two machines out there in those way-outlying areas, if one of them goes down, the chance is the other one going down.
Right. So, there are emergency situations, so voting doesn't stop, but at the same time, in order to get good numbers, we would need to have those machines up and running at some point.
What is the machine cost?
The machines that they purchased are about thirteen thousand dollars a machine. So, they received six million this year, and they had received six million the previous year. And with those six million, they were able to send machines to Bernalillo County, Doniana County, San Deval. I believe Santa Fe may have received some as well, and then San Juan County.
So, your numbers are, we use about thirty-six of the M-100s now?
No, we have thirty-six of them, but we only use...
How many use in an election?
Fifteen.
Fifteen?
Fifteen total.
All right. I was concerned if there was only get half, or what was it going to be?
No.
And thirteen thousand dollars, that was going to be...
So, and twenty percent spares? So...
Three?
Three, which isn't quite a bit. That isn't very much at all.
No, it's not. For new machines, it might be okay. We can keep in mind to budget a machine a year or something.
And that's what I've, you know, thought during the process forward.
Rather than buying them all at once?
Yeah, just a couple of machines here and there, not really trying to get a whole bunch right away. You know, especially if we see that the machines are durable and that we don't have any bugs or issues with them, then of course, we can just buy as needed, but, you know, supposedly, these systems are supposed to be the top-notch tabulators in the country, so.
Great. They don't use them in Florida, do they?
Well, they do not.
Okay. Abigail?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I don't have anything to add.
You know, I have a question for you. On the fuel at the airport, where are we at?
Unfortunately, I brought this up several meetings ago. I thought we were just about to enter an agreement with a company on a short-term basis for emergency situation, and that just fell through. The guy just stopped communicating with me completely. I'm not sure what happened. So, I decided the clock was ticking, so I went ahead and spoke with Justin and sent an email to Justin, Randy, and Jacob to start working on a request for proposals to provide the fuel in the trucks, the same that I was working on before, because I decided by the time I entered an agreement on a short-term basis, we may already be able to get through the bid process. Hopefully, we are not in such a dire situation now that the raids have started, but unfortunately, we still don't have fuel.
And we still have a lot of pilots that are having to stop in other towns before they get here, though.
Yeah. And there is the dimming option, so if there's...
Actually, everybody's going to Lord'sburg. They tell me that, that the guy, wherever the, Lord'sburg's getting their fuel... Yeah, that it's close to two and a half dollars a gallon cheaper than Dimming or Tucson, or...
I was thinking of the air tankers. I think the air tankers have to go to Dimming.
Right.
So, I just, for emergency situations, we still have a backup. Dimming's still there, but we are working on just going out for a normal request for proposals for that.
Let's make sure that we get a RFP sent to whoever's doing Lord'sburg.
Okay.
Mr. Chairman and members of the board, we are working on that right now. We just got all the information yesterday sent to us. We've been talking to the other airports of our size around the state, and so we're getting some good information, and the ball's rolling on that. So, we're going to, I'm working with Justin now and Jacob so that makes sure that we get this as quickly as possible. So, we've got some RFPs ready to go out and get the process going.
Thank you. That's the only question I had. Thank you. Commissioner?
Well, just wanted to thank Robert Morales and Dr. Nelson for participating on our hospital board, and want to see if we can get together and put together some kind of a certificate of thanks or of appreciation. Oh, did they do that already? Okay, great. We did have our first Parks and Recreation meeting for this new board, and it went really well. I think we have a consensus right now of raising or giving the Commission an option of raising the employees' portion to twenty percent. And during the discussion, there was a lot of good discussion, and, but the main, the main reason being is that it's really hard to even pay for electricity that they use whenever, they use the big building especially at ten percent. So, we want to try and make things feasible, but also keep it towards a fringe benefit to work for Grant County and utilize these buildings. We also discussed on including Baton Park, and there was those buildings, and the Fairground Building also in the Parks and Rec's recommendation to the Commission. So, we are working, and, you know, this group seems like we're going to get a lot done, so, you know, we're looking forward to it. So, we'll probably have something for us, or a recommendation for us on the following meeting.
Okay. Thanks.
That's it.
Do you have anything to add to what you said on the rec thing? You know, that's one of the plans that we have on that exhibit building, and that's the reason we're having the construction now, is to enhance that for that area. So, yeah, I'm glad you guys are looking at that super. I don't have anything else.
I have no report today. I did have a conversation with Silver School's Superintendent, and he wants to give us the baseball field out of Cliff. So, if you're interested in more baseball, maybe that might be something that you guys might talk about.
I know that the Little League in Cliff, they created their Little League again, got their charter, and they did come and play in Silver City, so that's great. You know, I think we're going to come very close to trying to bring in another employee in the Maintenance Department if we keep inheriting, which is, I'm not against inheriting, we just got to be able to protect and take care of the stuff that we do have. But that was another discussion we had in the Parks and Recs and trying to get enough help. I know we're going to need more help at the, at our convention center, and, you know, so we're going to really have to start looking at that in the following budget.
Some of those fees have to go up, because the cleaning and taking care of it after an event has to be paid for.
Correct.
Somewhere. So...
Correct.
Okay. Anybody have seconds? Seeing none, call us adjourned.